Good evening, everyone. We call the July 19th, 2022 closed session meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to give instructions on how the public can participate this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. The public can access the meetings live at Fullerton.legistar.com or on our government cable channels. Public is also invited to come to this meeting in person. The public can address city council in person or virtually. If they're doing it virtually, they would log into Zoom at 1-669-900-9128. The meeting ID is 978-4219-1797, or they can log into zoom.us/join. I will note that we are trying a new process tonight for public comments for folks in the council chambers. So they will need to register with staff in the city manager's office in advance for the items they wish to speak on, and then staff will call the names of those registered when it's their turn to come to the microphone. And those that want to speak in Zoom, as always, please raise your hand during the presentation. But again, those who are speaking in person will register with the city manager's office, and we will call your name when it's time to come to the microphone.
Very good. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to call the roll?
Mayor Jung.
Present.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
Mayor Protem Whitaker and Councilmember Dunlap are not yet present.
Councilmember Dunlap should be here in about five minutes.
Very well. And we will now hear public comments on any closed session items, seeing none in chambers or there in Zoom.
No one in Zoom.
Very well. We will recess now to closed session. We'll see you in a little while, folks.
... virtually by joining Zoom if they're not here in chambers. The number to call Zoom is 1-669-900-9128, or go to zoom.us/join, and the Zoom meeting ID is 978-4219-1797. All that information is on the agenda, if I spoke too quickly. And I'll also let the folks here in chambers know that we are starting a new process for public comments in the chambers tonight. We ask that you register to with staff in the city manager's office, which is the office right behind me here, to speak during public comment on agenda items. We'll call your names for those who have registered on the item when it's your turn to come to the microphone. And for those that are on Zoom, the process is still the same. Just raise your hand during that item to make sure we see you online and call you to speak. And again, for those of you who are here in person, please make sure you register on the items you want to speak on with the city manager's office next door.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification real quick.
Certainly, Councilman.
Madam Clerk, when the audience wanting to make public comments, when they register, do they have to provide their names?
They don't have to. We have speaker numbers that we can assign if they prefer to be called that way.
All right, thank you.
All right, Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to call the roll?
Councilmember Jung.
Present.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Here.
Well, this is a treat for me. We have dear friend, Deacon Richard Double D of St. Philip's Benise Catholic Church is here to give us our invocation this evening. Deacon, good to see you, sir, as always.
We come together this evening as a community of diversity, diversity not only in our appearance and origins, but also in our ideology and aspirations. St. Teresa of Calcutta, or more commonly known as Mother Teresa, once said, "If you are truly humble, nothing will touch you, neither praise nor disgrace, because you know who you are." To know who we are is to understand that no one is perfect. We're all flawed and prone to error. It is fitting then that we recognize the need to call upon that higher power that we hold in our hearts to guide us and nurture us as we live our lives each day. It is then that we ask you, Holy Spirit, to grant wisdom, patience, and understanding to our elected officials and the city of Fullerton, staff members, as they carry out their duties. Help them to impartially weigh all their requests put before them and to judge them based on the common good of all who live in Fullerton. And to grant patience and understanding to the residents of this city to recognize the decisions of the individual members of the city council are based on what they feel is in the best interest of all of us. And while we think of our Fullerton family, please guide and protect our men and women who serve in our police and fire departments and our national military at the risk of their own lives. And humbly and with loving hearts, we ask you, Holy Spirit, to grant these requests. Amen.
Sir, if you don't mind coming back up and speaking a little bit about the ministry or your work with the tri parish, whatever you'd like, sir.
Oh, thank you very much. The tri parish is a component of the faith-based churches and synagogues and mosques in our city. We were formed to advocate for the homeless and advocate for housing for those who are depressed in income. We have been very, very fortunate in the city that the city council and city members and staff have supported elements such as the Navigation and Recuporative Care Center in Fullerton. As we go forward, we will be advocating much more for housing. We feel that that is where our bent is now. We hope that going forward, we can share the same support of city council that we had in the past, and I know that there's interest in every member of the city to take care of those who are in need. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're blessed to have you, Deacon. We've got another treat this evening to lead and help us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. We have Boy Scout Troop 1201. So I would ask that the scouts please come forward and join our council and our public here in chambers and lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Those in uniform, salute, and people not in uniform, put your hand over your heart. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Inverigable, open, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, et veritatis in Christus.
Well, I certainly want to thank the troop for that. I know, I'm sure there is a scout leader here, and if they don't mind stepping up forward to the microphone and saying a little bit about the Boy Scout troop, I'd certainly be grateful to learn.
Good evening. We are Troop 1201, and today we're here to talk to or discuss with the city council about citizenship in our community. And yeah, we're here for an interesting time.
Young man, well said. I'll ask our city attorney if there are any closed session reports this evening.
No report this evening.
Very well, sir. I'll ask our council if there are any ex parte communications to report. Going to my left, seeing none, going to my right.
Yes, I've had a brief conversation with Mr. Dan Lancaster from the Firefighters Association.
And I had a lengthy meeting with the Firefighters Association this morning as well. We've got a presentation this evening. It's a proclamation for Parks Make Life Better 2022. And where is our Parks and Rights Director, Alice Loyah?
Director Loyah, your burden with lots of the talking.
I didn't have too much prepared. We just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that July is Parks Month, and Parks Makes Life Better is the logo that we share with California Parks and Recreation Society. And we invite you all to come and visit our parks. Thank you.
Well, again, Mr. Clemens is wearing a wonderful shirt, as you are.
We all are wearing our Park People shirts.
Great.
Some of our staffs here.
All right, so I'm going to allow the Assemblywoman's staff to do that one, and then we'll do this one. All right, so on behalf of...
Why don't I bring them all up?
Sure.
Since they're all in their shirts.
Well, let's go. This is going to make a great photo. Everybody get up here.
Yeah, all the Park People.
You should tell them that you can buy your shirt.
Oh, that's right. Ricardo, Ricardo likes to sell the shirts. They're, how much are they?
They're fifteen.
Fifteen dollars.
Ricardo, he just wants to bring these shirts here. I could have hocked them right here. Anyhow, listen, thank you, everybody. So Director Loyah, come over this way.
Okay.
This way, that way, which way would you like to go?
I don't care.
Right. We'll surround everybody.
Balance the...
All right.
All right. Get there.
Can I get a picture, too?
Sure.
One sec.
There you go.
Come on, Mary, be here, yeah?
Sure, I'm over here next to Mr. Clemens here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sure.
One, two, three.
Sorry, good to see you. Great shirt.
All right, now it's time for public comments. So if members of the public have comments they wish to make, and they've registered with the office accordingly, please line up to my right, your left, and you can make comments on non-agendized items.
Yeah, and we have six people, oh, sorry, seven people registered for this item, so I'll just call you. You can come line up, and whoever's to the microphone first. We have Bernard, Jackie Cordova, Todd Harrison, Sam Sullivan, Deanna Sullivan, Pablo Gomez, Curtis Gamble, and Bill Brown. We have eight. One more just snuck in.
My name is Todd Harrison, and I'm one of the endangered residents of the Rancho La Paz Mobile Home Park. Hello again, Mr. Mayor and council members. Yes, I'm back again with the same issues you have heard from me before. The number of other Rancho La Paz residents behind me in the hall varies, not because we are in less trouble, but that many of them are not able to be here every two weeks. I'm not in the bestest shape, but I can at least be here to remind you all that we still exist. John Saunders is still doing his best to destroy us financially for his profit. John Saunders' plan to functionally evict the homeowners of Rancho La Paz is still working. Month after month, more of us die while trying to cope with his attacks or surrender and are forced out of our homes at a loss. Those homes are then either sold to new owners that pay triple the rent we were paying or now more often become rental properties without functional limits on the age or number of the occupants. We are rapidly turning into a seniors park in name only. My neighbors are regrettably of an age that makes them afraid to call the police or otherwise protect themselves from the rapidly growing crime rate in what was recently a safe community. Every month, I encourage them to call for help when they see something, and it is starting to work. Still, the number of wandering non-residents in what is meant to be a safe place for seniors keeps going up, as does the number of crimes against property. No longer is it safe to leave a garage door open in daylight or a bicycle outside for a few minutes or anything of value untended. I don't know if the statistics kept by Fullerton are showing an increase in calls for service from lease, but with my own eyes, I have seen that of late, we have more and more visits by black and whites than we used to. The residents of Rancho La Paz have had to buy our own camera system and are installing it now in public spaces in an attempt to control what is happening to us. And while John Saunders is the predator causing so much harm to our community here in Fullerton, this council is in part responsible for not taking action to control them. I try to be civil so my points are listened to, but it has done me little good. So for the time being, I will no longer end these speeches with my customary "thank you," but instead use words more fitting: "stop the abuse." Thank you.
Very well, sir. Madam City Clerk, next speaker, please.
My name is Sam Sullivan. My little brother, David Sullivan, was murdered in your town by police officers in Buena Park. But today, I'm here to talk about Hector Hernandez, who was murdered in his front yard by Fullerton Police. Forty-seven percent of your budget right now goes towards police, and there is very little oversight and extremely, there's murders happening. There are people coming in and killing people. It's frustrating to continue to beg elected officials to do their job when there doesn't seem to be a lot of change, but I think it's important to keep Hector's name alive because he's no longer here to do that. One thousand one hundred and forty-five people were murdered by police just in the last year. Police murders are rising, not going down. Police are getting more and more bold and deciding to take the law into their own hands instead of taking a person and putting them in jail safely, instead of deciding to be the judge, jury, and executioner. They're not being held accountable. In addition, please stop using Lexipol. Lexipol is a multimillion-dollar for-profit company that writes policy for police officers to be intentionally vague, so that way, when an officer does something wrong, there's nothing in the policy that says, "Well, he can't do that." Lexipol is written by, it's a company that was started by an ex-police officer in Santa Ana, and their policies are human rights crimes. They ensure the maximum liability coverage for a city rather than the maximum amount of civil rights protection for civilians. I think that it's incredibly wrong that you guys use Lexipol, and I encourage you to cancel your subscriptions to Lexipol immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jackie Cordova.
What I have to say is important. I have a lot to say, and I'm going to speak fast. Good evening, community. I am Jackie, a mother and elder of Santa Ana. I am here to remind you, you are on native land. I come on behalf of Creator, the land of their birthplace Pavagna, of which the Tongva and Ahashaman Nation are the direct ancestors and the stewards of this land with its own tribal councils. This land is under California Republic State Treaty rights plus national and international friendship and peacekeeping treaty agreements. You, city of Fullerton, are in direct violation of the 1848 Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo, the Treaty of Peace, Friendship, Limits, and Settlement between the U.S. and Mexico, which states the Mexica are indigenous to this country, putting an end to war and assures the concord, harmony, and mutual confidence wherein the two people should live as good neighbors. There shall be firm and universal peace between the United States of America and the Mexican Republic and between their respective countries, territories, cities, towns, and people, without exception of places or persons. In the said territories, property of every kind now belonging to Mexicans shall be inviolably respected. The present owners, the heirs of these, and all Mexicans who may hereafter acquire said property by contract shall enjoy with respect to it guarantees equally ample as if the same belonged to citizens of the United States. Unfortunately, politicians and police are addicted to money and power. We, the people, are here to destroy your systems of corruption. Fullerton is being charged with many abuses for drugings, kidnapping, and rapes in their downtown JP 23 bars. For the murders of your own residents, Hector Hernandez and David Sullivan, rest in peace. It is also akin to murder in the first degree for shutting down housing to put in warehouses. The city of Fullerton is hereby publicly condemned for the misappropriation of public power and funds. We, the community, are here because we are concerned about the terrible treatment of residents by law enforcement, their cover-ups, and excessive deadly force in their culture of killing. We condemn the unnecessary murders of unarmed residents by the hands of your Fullerton Police Department. Yes, his Mexican-American blood is on your hands, and it cries out from the soil of his front yard, never letting us forget. The bodies do keep adding up. And what about the psychological nightmares your officers must surely face, knowing that they killed someone's dad? The PTSD is off the charts around here. We are not criminals. In Long Beach, several times, your police force has come up in testimony over the last few months in council hearings regarding the abuses being allowed to happen here in Fullerton, from women being drugged and rape kits being lost to a father manslaughtered in his own front yard. We protect our children here. We don't kill them. We don't send them to wolves at downtown bars. In Orange County, we have been in direct rebellion since these ritualistic false-flag abuses became very apparent in 2017.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Next speaker is Deanna Sullivan. And Bernard, I'll give you a heads up that you're after her.
Hello, my name is Deanna Sullivan. I am the mother of David Patrick Sullivan, who was murdered in your city of Fullerton by Buena Park Police Department Officers Jennifer Tran and Bobby Cullen. My son was nineteen years old, unarmed, but suffering a mental health crisis. So Bobby Cullen and Jennifer Tran played judge, jury, and executioner, and they shot my son. They hit him seven times, some in the front, some in the side, and some in the back. He was running away, nineteen years old, and this forty-something-year-old man, police officer, and a thirty-something-year-old female officer didn't even talk to him. They didn't use their words. They didn't try to communicate with him to see what was going on. Excessive force led to the murder of Hector Hernandez. Cops are fallible. The unearned levels of protection that they are bestowed after only six months of classroom training. It takes nine months to become a beautician and six months classroom training for a cop. It's unheard of in just about any other profession where you are responsible for a person's life. The cops are responsible for Hector Hernandez's murder. The chief of police is responsible for his lack of action to hold the cops accountable. Mayor and city council members, you're responsible as elected officials. You need to urge DA Spitzer to reopen Hector's case, hold these murderous cops responsible. Hector was submitting. He was submitting. He was, he knew he did something wrong, and he was willing, he was submitting. And this vigilante warrior-type cop came in and murdered him. Instead of practicing protection and peace, he murdered him. You need to terminate your contract with Lexipol, and Lexipol is a multimillion-dollar for-profit company that your citizens, your citizens' tax money is going to pay them. And you guys know, because you voted to have Lexipol be the policies, and these policies, as you know, are so vague that you can't pinpoint to one policy. It's so loosey-goosey, like everything falls through the cracks. There's no red line. That you guys want us, as citizens, to be held accountable for speeding or for whatever other laws we have to hold or be responsible for, and we know where the line is. Hold your cops responsible. Accountability. Stop with this. Stop with this. It's just escalating and escalating, and soon it's going to come into your circle, in your family, in your neighborhood, in anybody else's. I never thought in a million trillion years, my son, my nineteen-year-old son, who had plans, he had plans. He's nineteen. He was loved, and he loved us. He had plans.
Thank you.
And he could have just been taken in and held accountable, but he wasn't. He was murdered.
Thank you, Ms.
Okay, Bernard is next.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I am a Fullerton resident. I'd like to request that my street, South Pomona Avenue, be properly repaired. You've patched it up, but it's not enough. The slurraceal turns to rubble in just a couple of weeks. I've tripped and fallen on ponchos and poor sidewalk conditions on my own street, and so do other seniors who live there. Thank you, councilmember Zara, for working with the residents there on this, but I know it requires three votes. Mr. Jung, you asked me to be less critical of you and to work together. Well, this is an opportunity to help many seniors and people with mobility challenges in a disadvantaged area. Please allocate funds towards the street and alleyway. Go Bruins.
Madam City Clerk, next comment.
Pablo Gomez, you are next, and then Bill Brown, you'll be after him.
Good evening, Mr. Gomez.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about Hector Hernandez and how he was slain in front of his friends, family, and neighbors, and how, I still can't believe nothing's been done to the officer that shot him dead. And the way they handled the case and the lies that were put out after seeing the video over and over again, dash cam and personal videos that the neighbors had of the incident, Hector Hernandez was fully compliant, and he was definitely afraid of dogs because he got a bad experience. So when the canine officer deployed the dogs at him, confusing the dog because he was complying with his hands in the air, his hand only went down to protect himself, you know, because the dog came at him, and he was complying to the officer. There was more than one officer that night that yelled commands to him, and he was confused at first, went towards the door, turned around, almost like spinning around because the cops didn't have their shit together, excuse me, they didn't have their stuff together. And then Officer Farrell, he should have a psychological evaluation, because this guy, he couldn't keep it together to make his dog understand, hey, this is the bad guy. He had to go point to him because he was complying. The confused dog was going to attack him. And then he could instead, I think there should be a law that canine officers should have only tasers if they have a dog. When you have how many cops pointing the guns at this one guy unarmed at the time with his hands up in the air? And then the canine officer, because he lost his cool, when his dog got stuck with the knife that Hector, you know, he was protecting himself, he was complying, so what do you think? He's fighting for his life now. His dog was deployed, shouldn't have been. That's all on the officer. That poor dog had nothing to do with what happened that night. It was the officer. He should not be on the streets of Fullerton. He murdered Hector Hernandez because of his negligence, his own psyche. He cared more about that little dog, you know, than a human life, which is not, that is against the law now. And nothing's been done to this guy. He's still roaming the streets, you know, and we got a murderer roaming the streets. And this guy's like a loose cannon. He should not be, he shouldn't be allowed to even have a weapon. This guy should not be on the force. He should be fired. I can't believe that this has just been pushed by the wayside, especially with, I think that the case should be reopened. This guy should be, if anything, fired, should not be on the police force. Hector Hernandez was a loving, caring citizen, hardworking. The whole neighborhood loved him.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Bill Brown, and then Curtis Gamble, and we had a few more names registered, so Maureen Milton, Mike Rodriguez, Kayla Sato, Jennifer Rojas, and Ben Williams. If you want to work your way over to the line, we'll get you to the microphone soon.
Mr. Brown, good evening.
Good evening. So I want to get just straight to the point, and as everybody being humans here, we all know that Todd Spitzer, in his sixteen-page legal review, wrote the complete opposite story to exonerate the officer, and appears to be what we're following here with our local law enforcement. They're just kind of following the lead of that agency. And we could all see clearly that Hector was in a fight on the ground with the dog when the officer was at a safe distance and saw him hurt his dog and then killed him for injuring his property. And that's all it was, was property. We all know that. It's just common sense. Look at it. Says it all over it. So we can't allow the whole community, including everyone at home watching this on TV right now, go on thinking that that was okay, this is how a police officer is supposed to perform. The story was written by the district attorney that the officer was releasing his dog, and Hector swang the knife several times, trying to stab him, missed, and hit the dog. Complete lie. We see that. That's evident. We all have common sense. He swung his arm one time, only one time, when the officer was at a safe distance away, seen his dog get hurt, and then ran up to shoot Hector to pull his property off to not get injured further. He was shot through his arm with that singular motion. It was shot through the arm. He never made stabbing motions at the officer whatsoever. We all have common sense, and we can look at this and see it. Why do we sit back and we pretend? This is why law enforcement has a hard time recruiting people. Nobody wants to be a police officer anymore because none of them are ever held accountable for anything. You think people growing up, kids want to see that and go, oh, no. I don't want to have to be part of a lying squad of people that just kill and just make up any story they want. If they're supposed to enforce the laws, why don't they follow the laws? You'll never get the respect of the community if you don't follow the things that you expect from the community. I understand that officers, there's times, yeah, they have to defend themselves. But this is a clear instance when that was not necessary. We all know that as human beings. We all have kids. Hector's kids are at my house right now. Like everybody who wants to hide this and cover this up, sit down with his kids and talk to them and say, wow, he should be there, the father should be there with them today. But we all just pretend like, you know, the big old broken will in law enforcement that's continued on for years and years. We just keep following it. No one's being a man enough to stand up and say, hey, this is no good, we shouldn't do this, guys. Or other officers say, hey, man, why'd you do that? That was unnecessary, man. That was totally unnecessary. Why can't men be men and stand up instead of going, oh, no, I might lose my job. The other guys back at the station won't like me. They'll say I'm a rat. I mean, this is horrible. You're just turning communities against police officers. I mean, you're just going to watch them just deplete, deplete, deplete. What's the big deal with being accountable for a mistake you make? Even if he's, even if he gets convicted of it, it ain't like the officer's going to go to prison, probably. He'll just get fired and not be a cop again. I mean, that's the reality of it. But we're going to cover up this poor man fighting for his life on the ground and being ambushed by the officer.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Clerk, next comment.
I have a letter from Councilman Hernandez. I'd like to give you...
Curtis Campbell is next.
Councilman Hernandez from Fullerton.
Mr. Campbell, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Curtis Campbell, activist for the homeless and the veterans. I'd just like to say rest in peace Hector Hernandez. And rest in peace Kelly Thomas. To the family, the Kelly Thomas case was a long struggle. It took us a year to get a million dollars on behalf of Kathy Thomas. It took us five years to get a five-million-dollar settlement on behalf of Ron Thomas. And I just want the family and all other victims out there to know that it's a long struggle, but continue to fight. We did every day. We went through what you're going through. So just keep fighting. Keep coming to the mic. Don't ever stop. Get justice. Okay, this evening also, I would like to share with you my thoughts on the Fullerton homeless and veterans community. The Cash App card is free. It's a free customizable Visa debit card, which allows the Fullerton homeless and veterans to pay for goods and services such as rent, apartments, hotel rooms, cars, vehicles, car vehicle homes, RV, recreation vehicle homes, ADUs, accessory dwelling unit homes, tanning shelter homes, shipping container homes, Airbnb homes, parking space homes, and safe parking programs. This Cash App card can also be used anywhere Visa is accepted, both online and in stores. Through the Cash App Visa card, the homeless and veterans can send and receive money/funding directly from family, friends, the city, and or the Hope Center in Fullerton. At the Fullerton City Council meeting on June the 7th, 2020, the city received, on behalf of the homeless veterans, one million seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand in SB2 funding in which the city must provide rapid rehousing, rental assistance, navigation centers, emergency shelters, transitional housing for our homeless and veterans via housing vouchers or the Cash App card. The city has received more than ten million dollars on behalf of the Fullerton homeless and veterans that would allow them to lease one of the four Goodman Center buildings. I skipped over a lot of this. Let me just go down to the bottom. The Goodman Logistics Center and Prologix are the two major billion-dollar companies that buys large warehouses, building in our community. Hold on, I lost where I was. Oh, but anyway, the Goodmans and other large warehouses are buying lots of properties. And we would like to, thank you very much.
And Maureen Milton, you are our next speaker.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Milton.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Got it. Thank you so, so very much. I'm here to ask two simple requests and one statement. Number one, is it possible that all agendas for all meetings, can they be outside so somebody could come by and pick them up any hour of the day or night if they're supposed to be out? What is it, forty-eight hours in advance? Because if I know somebody's coming by and we're going to have meetings, or I'm here on a meeting on Monday, I'd love to be able to pick the other agendas up just in case I can't make it to the additional meetings. The other thing is, not, I've looked, and not every committee, commission, or committee or commission agenda has the members' names listed and their status on the agenda. Can that, is that, am I missing something? Or can that be put on as they're printed? The other thing is, can you put a large sign, like you have on the back, the big closed-down Friday sign? Can you put that out on the front door? So as I said before, people coming by the bus can see from the bus that what day, what Friday we're going to be closed. And my last quick statement. And how many business cards, Councilmen Zara, did you give out when you were running for council? Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, next speaker.
Next speaker is Mike Rodriguez. And Kayla Sato will be after that.
Very well. Mr. Rodriguez, good evening.
Okay, good evening. Mike Rodriguez, Fullerton resident. So first, I'd like to start with the land acknowledgement to remind people that these are the lands of the Tongva and the Hachiman people, who were historically removed from their lands and forced into Spanish missions. When the missions eventually ended, native Californians faced even more violence from the Mexican and US governments until their cultures almost completely disappeared. And that brings us to Hector's story, a story that's almost disappeared as well. It's been over two years. You think that by Spitzer offering his misleading report and his pro-police verdict, that Hector's story will disappear? Or the story of Kelly Thomas? Or the story of the two other people of color that were gunned down by Fullerton police the same year that Hector was killed? Seventeen-year-old Hannah Williams, whose parents are here tonight, and Jesus Estrada León. There seems to be a problem of trigger-happy policing on the Fullerton police force. And if no action is done, what does that say to all the other officers? You're going to give them a license to kill. And I told the same thing to Spitzer a few months ago. Hector's blood is still on your hands, right? Especially you, Councilmember Whitaker. His constituents, he lived in your area, right? And his constituents still live there. Councilmember Jung, Hector's son, played football in your league. You know them. What do we have to do to get you guys to listen? When the council put the Police Officers Association or the Chamber of Commerce's interests over the interests of the ones that you represent, we have a problem. And that problem today is a crisis in leadership. You've made too many bad choices these last couple of years. And we're all taking notes. Trust me, we're all taking notes. Maintenance workers have been here saying they need more to do their job. Library services need more to do their jobs. Victims of JP-23 need justice. Homelessness is rising in our city. We are simply asking you to do the right thing. And don't just move on when people's lives are being taken by armed agents on your watch in your city. The right decision is not to increase police funding two years in a row since their murders, like y'all have done. This does not reduce crime. And we have been trying to tell you this for years. The right thing is to hold the ones responsible for Hector's murder accountable. Step up, speak out. Until then, we are holding you accountable for Hector's murder. And once again, you know, we're here in public comment because this has never been agendized at this council. Okay, there's issues, these problems, Hector's life. Please acknowledge it, okay? And take action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kayla. And then Jennifer Rojas will be after that.
Good evening, Kayla.
Hello. My name is Kayla Sato, and I'm with Orange County Environmental Justice, as many of you are aware. And while I know that I am new to Fullerton City Council meetings, but I think of the city and I think of care, compassion, and trying to be our, trying to be our, trying our best to be there for each other. But that's not what seems to be reflected by our city council and our police officers. The cops constantly get involved in our politics so that they can keep murdering people in our community. And that's not okay. We need change, and we need to urge DA Spitzer to reopen Hector's case. How do we, how do we want to celebrate things like National Day of Kindness in the city and the anniversary of Hector's murder when we can't, when we have the audacity to let our city officers murder people in our city and walk off scot-free? Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on all of you for letting this go. In addition to this, we are willing to throw more children under the bus by willing to jeopardize their health by expanding the logistics center with the environmental impact report showing that it probably would. At the same time, we want to take away their fathers and families through the excessive use of force and violence. We ought to be ashamed of ourselves. We need to hold this officer and murderer accountable. We can't accept things like this any longer. Reopen the case, fire the officer, and respect Hector's life. Respect the lives of all of us in this city. Be it environmental justice, housing, or the excessive use of force, we need to respect those in our community and the life of people like Hector Hernandez.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, next speaker.
Next is Jennifer Rojas. And then we have two more registered, Ben Williams and Kurt Johnston.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jennifer Rojas. I'm a policy advocate and organizer with the ACLU of Southern California, based in Orange County. Today, the ACLU of Southern California once again stands in solidarity with Hector Hernandez's family, his neighbors, and this community in calling for justice and accountability in Hector's name. Last year, we spoke to the city council about California law under AB 392. AB 392 is California's new state use-of-force law that strengthened the standard by which police are legally permitted to use deadly force. Under this law, police can only use deadly force when necessary and in defense of human life. This new necessary standard replaced the antiquated, reasonable-in its standard that was in place previously. The legislature passed this law, AB 392, in 2019 to achieve one clear goal. That was to save lives from police violence. If there are alternatives to deadly force, police cannot take a person's life. If there is not an immediate threat of serious harm to a person, police cannot take a human life. It's incredibly concerning that the city of Fullerton's, the police department's use-of-force policy fails to adequately communicate the new law on deadly force under AB 392, specifically in its section Deadly Force Applications. Fullerton PD's deadly force policy omits the key guiding principle that peace officers may use deadly force only when necessary in defense of human life. This is concerning. Too little has changed since the murder of Kelly Thomas by Fullerton Police Department in 2011. Once again, a family and a community is reeling from the loss of a loved one at the hands of police. Hector Hernandez should still be with this community today. He should still be with his sons, his family, and his neighbors, and his friends. We urge the Fullerton City Council to take action against police brutality and violence. This specifically means working with residents of Fullerton, specifically those most impacted by police violence and brutality, to come up with the solutions to address police violence and to ensure that Fullerton residents are not put at risk by being in the presence of violent officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Williams.
Mr. Williams, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Ben Williams. My daughter is Hannah Williams. She was taken from us July 5th, 2019 by a Fullerton K-9 unit. My daughter was coming, she was, she was on medication, and she was off of it for a little while. So she was having an issue. We called 911 to see if they could help us find her and locate her. She took our vehicle. Later, a Fullerton K-9 unit got involved somehow, and there was some kind of incident with my daughter. The K-9 unit with the Fullerton unit, or the Fullerton police guy with the K-9 unit ended up shooting Hannah. We don't exactly know how many times she was shot. There was an autopsy done immediately afterwards, so we didn't get a chance to see exactly what had happened. To this day, we still do not have any more information than we did the day that it happened. We still haven't got all of our personal effects back. We haven't heard anything from Fullerton. We haven't heard anything from the lawyer that we had. And we definitely haven't heard anything from Mr. Spitzer. Okay, my daughter was seventeen years old. I called 911, explained the situation. Somehow, a K-9 unit that wasn't even involved coming from another call with an injured dog arrested or shot my daughter numerous times. She said, they said that she was driving over a hundred miles an hour on the freeway. There was no evidence of any type of accident to the vehicle that she was driving. As a matter of fact, we picked up the vehicle with no gas in it and returned it to the rental center with no problems. No questions asked. There was no damage to the vehicle. Yet, the officer said there was some kind of collision. The officer also stated that he heard two shots coming from her vehicle. And this is July 5th in the afternoon around traffic time. He said he heard two shots coming from her vehicle. Two shots. She had an airgun, BB gun, in her vehicle. I don't know what happened to this day. They don't give us any information. They said that they don't have the dash cam evidence. They said that the video camera that they had was conclusive. The final report that they had was conclusive that the officer feared for his life because of the collision. But there was no damage to the vehicle. Hannah was shot several times. We weren't told until around 3:30 in the morning that she was gone. We don't know anything else but what they've told us that day. And from that day on, we've had hearsay from other people. But I keep asking for more information to find out what's going on. The officer that did it wasn't even supposed to be there. He was supposed to be taking his dog to service because he was on another call or another incident. We have no answer.
Thank you, sir.
And our last speaker is Kurt Johnston.
Mr. Johnston. Paul, he's coming up to the mic. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
You have one here.
Very good. Sir, good evening.
Oh, me? Hello, my name is Kurt Johnston. I just want to say how nice Hillcrest Park is turning out to be. Had a chance to walk through there at nighttime with all the lights on, by the duck pond, by the fountain. All those lights stay on till like 12 o'clock. It's really nice. I was up in Boyle Heights to see the grand opening of the bridge, and I took a bike ride through the park up there. I had heard that Boyle Heights was a very unfriendly place to go. I mean, not safe for like taxi drivers and stuffs. But I noticed, as I went to the park, I noticed, you know, I stopped to get a drink of water, and all the drinking fountains work. Seemed to me like a friendly city. I'd still like to see, maybe if one of our drinking fountains could be turned on in the transportation terminal and train station. There's no restrooms or drinking fountains, and it just feels unsanitary. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and go to the Zoom speaker.
Okay. Jane Rifer, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, hello, council, Mayor and council members. Good evening. I wanted to talk about the fact that Fullerton is an officially designated Preserve America community. Unlike Anaheim, unlike Brea, unlike Placentia and La Habra, we are the only city in North Orange County that has this designation. We are known regionally for our historic downtown. People love it, and also for the historic houses all through the city that serve housing needs for diversity of incomes. We're one of the few cities that has lower-income houses that are historic and also higher-end houses that are historic. And unfortunately, though, the vast majority of houses in Fullerton that are historic are not protected. It's funny because you can walk down a street looking on both sides and see this fantastic neighborhood with the heritage of our city and not realize that you're in a neighborhood that has no protections for these homes. I know this is unintentional, but it's a very significant and unfortunate oversight that our zoning code doesn't match all of the actual reality on the ground of our historic neighborhoods. So I know something has come up just recently with this, and that's that, uh, the city of, I'm sorry, Pathways of Hope, please excuse me, I'm not feeling well today. Pathways of Hope is planning on tearing down three historic residences to expand their program. I love their program, but I'd like to see if the city and residents can work with them to find an alternative to serve the purpose but not tear down the homes. And we have lots of social services throughout Fullerton that operate from historic homes, and so I know this can be done. I also want to mention that we, Friends for a Livable Fullerton, the group I'm with, spoke with the city earlier this year regarding having a little budget set aside so that neighbors and residents can recognize their neighborhoods as historic and recognize their homes as historic. I'm concerned that there may not be resources and budget to do that this year, and it's just essential. This is a very pivotal year for that, and we really do need to have those resources. I'd like to give a shout out to Fullerton Heritage, who's done a lot of heavy lifting in this area, and give their website, which is fullertonheritage.org, so people can see how they can get started designating their homes as historic. And also, our group, Friends for a Livable Fullerton, at savefulerton.com, you can find it savefulerton.com, under the housing section, we also have resources. And we would like to partner with the city to say, it's a large project, but we think it's an essential project to retain the significant heritage and legacy of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. After all the speakers, we'll return this back to council. We'll ask staff for any communications or reports. Anything from the city attorney? Seeing nothing. Moving to our city manager.
Mayor Jung and the city, city council members, two things came up in public comment that I can address. One is, there was a question about a street. I didn't catch what the street name was, but I'll look into it. As you are aware, the city council this year in the budget put about $13 million in street, in street repaving, and we are trying to address the issue. There's been a lot of deferred maintenance that's happened over the many years, and the city council has this as a priority, and we are trying to work on it. But with the number of streets we have, we can only hit so many streets at a time. But I will look at that street and, and have staff look at that street. Second, on the Pathways of Hope, that has come forward to me, and I've asked Community Development for an update on that, that we can get out to council as far as what the Pathways of Hope project is and what we can or can't do regarding that project. And then third, on, there was a quest, request about homeless and as far as encampments in Fullerton. And I wanted to let you know that one, one obstacle that we are work, working through right now is some of the beds and some of the facilities that have beds are on what essentially is called COVID lockdown or was last week, and we're continuing to monitor that situation. And that means that they had so many COVID cases at the shelters that they're not accepting new, new individuals. But as that opens back up, we will have those, those beds back available to the city of Fullerton.
Very well. Thank you for that report. We'll bring it back to council for council reports. Councilman Zara, you have anything this evening, sir?
No reports, but I'd like to see if, if also our chief or maybe our, our staff would look into the safety at Rancho La Paz, if, if that would be a possibility. And then also, the, just to, the street is South Pomona Avenue, Mr. Manager. Thank you.
Very good, sir. Councilmember Silva, anything, sir, this evening?
Nothing today. Thank you.
Very well, sir. Councilmember Dunlap, anything? Very well. Mr. Mayor Protime, anything, sir?
None this evening.
Very good. We'll move on to consent calendar. I'll seek a motion to move the calendar.
I'd move the consent calendar.
Very well. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protime Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Very good. There are no public hearings this evening. We'll move on to regular business. Item number eight, Hunt Branch Library Update. We do have two presentations this evening. I'm assured they will be expedient. So, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor Jung and city council members, the first presentation is a, is by Mr. Richard Stein from Arts OC, and he's going to give a overview of the public process that they did and what the public input into the Hunt Library was as far as what the community was looking at. And then the second presentation will be from our city engineer, Stephen Bice, who's going to give an update on where we are on the construction as far as moving forward, as well as security. Third, we'll be asking for action from the city council that we either move forward with either an informal RFP, I call it informal, and that we could directly solicit RFP requests from, or requests for proposals from different groups, local groups, or a formal RFP to start moving the process forward. We have met with, or I have met with Heritage Futures and Arts OC, and I believe Arts OC is still very interested in moving forward. And Heritage Futures, while has had interest, has seen that some of their strengths such as programming probably don't necessarily match the Hunt Library. And so I think getting some other partners involved will be to our success as we move forward. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Richard Stein for his presentation.
Mr. Stein, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's a pleasure to see you all again. And again, I'm Richard Stein, President and CEO of Arts Orange County. We are the countywide nonprofit arts council, and we are designated by the Board of Supervisors as the official local arts agency for the county of Orange. And a good bit of what we do is assist communities around the county in their cultural planning efforts and in public art projects. And it was a great privilege for us to be selected along with Heritage Future as programmatic partners. So perhaps we could go to the next slide, please?
Yeah.
So, the history of the Hunt Library dates back 50 years. I won't read through every one of these bullet points here on the timeline, but it is considered a masterpiece of the mid-century modern style by one of the premier architects of that style, William Pereira. And it operated as a library. It was given by Norton Simon and the Hunt Foods Corporation Foundation to the city and operated as a library until 2013. It was leased to a neighboring property owner for a few years, and then in 2019, thanks to the efforts of Assemblywoman Sharon Cork Silva, grant in the award, in the amount of 2.5 million was secured from the State of California through the State of California Library in order to revitalize and renovate the building, which was in great need. In June 2020, we were selected with Heritage Future to be the programmatic partners, and in October, we were contracted by the city to conduct a community input and programmatic plan, which we did. And in May of 2021, during that process, we spoke with Senator Josh Newman because we were informed by the city that the $2.5 million was not really adequate to conduct the renovations. And Senator Newman very kindly agreed to walk a request to the state for an additional $2.5 million plus $250,000 in programmatic startup funds. They were approved in July 2021. And the next month, the city council approved moving the dog park from the Hunt Library grounds to Brea Dam Park in order to make more space available on the Hunt Library property for programmatic activities. In October, we delivered the report that appears in your packet for this evening to the city staff. And in the winter of this year, the city began renovation, and you'll be hearing more about that from the city staff. Next slide, please. So our process was to listen. We came, we always have ideas, of course, but, but we believe that we must always deliver what the community is interested in seeing and adapt any ideas that we may have to meet and fulfill their interests and desires. We conducted 36 stakeholder interviews, and we had an online survey that had over 800 responses, and it was available in multiple languages. We held three visioning sessions with 100 attendees, and those were held in English, Spanish, and Korean. I'd like to just shout out to Iglesca Padilla Nunchi for her assistance in ensuring that we had adequate participation from the Latino community here in Fullerton. Next slide. Emerging from all of this, we distilled the community's input into a vision statement, a mission statement, and goals to bring the Hunt Library to life by gathering and enriching and inspiring residents and visitors, to provide programs that are accessible, adaptable, and designed to evolve and fit the needs of the community, and the goals to attain the vision and fulfill the mission by providing experiences that are multidisciplinary, collaborative, and participatory. Excellent. In the space utilization, we mapped out different potential uses of the different spaces within the building and on the grounds. And part of this was also to identify a location for library services, which were contingency part of the initial state grant from the state library, that there needed to be some library services available on site, although it was not required to resume service as a full-branch library. And so, as you can see on the map, there's a variety of different areas with programmatic focus, including a cafe that would offer service indoors and out. Next slide. The report goes into great detail and maps out a sample month of programs, a sample year of programs, what a week looks like, as well as identifying which programs check off which boxes of the goals, as well as the different constituencies that they serve children, adults, teens, seniors, and the frequency that they would be offered. So I'm not going into all of that this evening, there's not enough time, but you can see it all within the report. Next slide. We also brought in a technical production expert who we've worked with in the past, and he identified specific needs for equipment within the facility totaling around $350,000, which is fairly low, but it was his belief that these would basically make it possible to have a variety of different programs, but for larger events and activities, those kinds of events would require equipment to be brought in, and that that was desirable because then you would have absolutely the latest technology to be brought in. But mostly in the area of, you know, having high-speed internet onsite, as well as wiring and cabling throughout the building so that it's accessible throughout. Next slide, please. And the financial model that was, that this was based on was to have a cafe onsite that would be responsible for paying a certain amount of the operating expenses and enable the programming to take place. It also was fortuitous that the funds that Senator Newman obtained included $250,000 in startup program, programmatic expenses to get things launched with the idea that after a three-to-five-year launch period, it could become sustainable. But it also depended that this was, at the outset, a programmatic partnership, and that was the original RFP, and that this would be the city working hand-in-hand with its partners on some of the responsibilities with respect to upkeep and maintenance of the building and those expenses. I believe that concludes my report. And again, I just want to say thank you for inviting us to conduct this process with the community. It was wonderful to meet so many people who we did not already know, although we know many already in Fullerton, and to have such tremendous enthusiasm for the restoration of this building and its activation for all sorts of purposes, from library services and literacy programs to arts and culture, and serving all the different diverse constituencies who reside here in Fullerton. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. And we'll hold questions from council for a moment until the second presentation is done, and we may invite Mr. Stein back up for some questions from council members accordingly. The second presentation is from, thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Stephen Bice, city engineer. I'll be giving an update on all construction activities currently at the Hunt, as well as some interim security measures being taken. I do have a PowerPoint. You have it?
There's a second one.
There's a second one here. All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, next slide, please. Just a little bit of background, in addition to what was already said about the two grants, you already got a pretty in-depth summary of that. A couple of things that we've done in the last six months is in April, we did take an action to Park and Rec Commission in efforts to close parkland during evening hours, which was approved by Parks and Rec, because some of the area adjacent to the actual building of the Hunt is parkland, which includes the dog park area. On June 8th, we did take this item to Landmarks Commission for approval of all of the building repairs plans, security fencing, location, and site improvements. Next slide. We took a phased approach for construction for various reasons. You can see the phasing on here. Phase one was roof replacement, phase two sewer and water main replacement, phase three building repairs, phase four was perimeter security fencing, and phase five was the remaining site improvements surrounding the building. Next slide, please. So phase one, you can see here is roof replacement. Construction actually started on Monday, so see some, some construction activity finally happening out there. First is abatement, and then they're going to start the demo this week as well. The construction also includes installation of a very modern insulated foam for the roofing. It is flat, so we had to be very innovative and think outside the box to make this work long-term. Next slide, please. Phase two is the water and sewer improvements, which have been completed. This was included complete replacement of the sewer mains, the water mains, addition of a fire hydrant, some black flows, some meters, and some other, some other devices. Next slide, please. Phase three is the building repairs. The, this is currently out to bid. We anticipate opening bids in August, late August, and construction will be starting in late September. So this is well underway. Hopefully, by the end of September, we'll, we'll have, we'll start to see construction on the building repairs. Next slide, please. Phase four, security fencing. We are also out to bid for this item as well. We anticipate construction of the fencing to be in mid to late September and conclude in November. Next slide, please. Site improvements, this was trying to trail toward the end of the, the building repairs and the security fencing. We're anticipating this to happen a little bit down the line. This includes some modification of the parking, modified ingress egress for fire access, as well as some ADA improvements. Next slide, please. The site improvements also include a trash enclosure. This was a rendering provided by our historic architect of how the, the trash enclosure would look adjacent to the building. Next slide, please. Here's an overall schedule. I kind of ran through this as we went through the slides. Roof is currently underway. Water and sewer is complete. Phase three, the building and the fence are out to bid. Hopefully, they'll start mid to late September. And then phase five, the site, is currently under design and expected to be in construction in May of '23. Next slide, please. So interim security measures. We are maintaining, monitoring, and responding to the current alarm system. When the alarm gets tripped, it pings to several staff, which deployed, gets directed to PD, and they do, they do a drive-by, see what's going on. We did install temporary security fencing along Commonwealth near our pump station, and that's the image you see to the right. Unfortunately, the chain is, chain link fence is getting cut quite frequently and becoming kind of a maintenance burden, but we are monitoring it daily and repairing it daily as well. We installed barriers from the Pacific, the south side, the Pacific Park Bridge to the Hunt parking lot to delineate where people should and should not be. We have been painting the wood planks that we've used to board up the broken windows. We painted that black just to make it look more like the current windows around the Hunt. We painted that black just to make it look more like the current windows around the Hunt. We did install vehicular chain gates at the Basque Avenue entrance, as well as a northerly rail access location. And just recently, we did remove all contents from the building, so it's, it's a blank slate as it is today. Next slide. And that's it.
All right. I'll ask council members to hold questions until after public comments, and then we'll invite our staff or Mr. Stein back up for any follow-up questions. So, we'll take public comments on this matter. Madam City Clerk, who's the first?
We have six speakers registered, so Aglith Nunchi, Karime Kalixto, Ellen Ballard, Curtis Gamble, Barbara Kilponin, and Kurt Johnston. If you'd like to line up, and Aglith, you're the first one on the list.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Aglith Nunchi. And we came here, you know, in support of our Hunt's Library. We have years, we were part of the, we, Mr. Rick Stein, which is a wonderful partner, because he did an event that I think, I'm pretty sure the three of you assist, Councilman Sara, Councilman Silva, and Councilman Dunlap for El Dia del Niño. And Arts of OC is an amazing organization. They're working very hard, and now, of course, it's changing, you know, the narrative, the, what is gonna be now a tenant relationship that we're gonna have in our city. When we did, you know, we worked very hard for this, and we appreciate the support of Assemblywoman Charlotte Kinselva, and so many meetings that we were as a community. And recently, we went, and thank you to our police chief, Robert Dunn, and the, all the cabinet here in the, in the city, the heads department, Yuri Booth, Kelly Fritz Sol, Meg McQuaid, and other members, you know, and our captains, you know, Raiders and Arana, everybody, you know, and our team of the Center for Healthy Neighborhood, we went to support, you know, the cleaning of the Hunt's Library, which was vandalized. It was so sad for all of us because that is, you see, a treasure in our city that we wanted to be open. We want this to, you know, to give the services for our, that part of the city that we needed so much. Recently, we had the inauguration of the Pacific Drive Park, which we want to be a continuation. And that's what we need your support, we need more safety, and all the, it's gonna be implemented, it's gonna be very helpful. And even though, I am not sure if, you know, Arts of OC is gonna be, being a partner, keep being a partner with all of us, whoever you choose, you see Mr., you see Rick Stein, you're always gonna have a partner here in the city, they welcome you always. But we need, you know, to, this project don't die, because then we sit in close, so many our establishment in our city infrastructure, you know, like a Maple Center, they are closed, and they're not giving service to the community. Please, let's push forward this project and make it quickly. We have the funds, and we have the people that support you in anything that you guys need. Please help us to make this possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk.
Next speaker is Karime.
Hi, good evening. My name is Karime. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Well, I'm here to please, hopefully that you guys say okay to this project as soon as possible and not take long as the parks. We really need this in our neighborhood, especially with kids don't wanting to do anything. I think this is a great opportunity for them to, hopefully you guys have a different events and things for their kids and teens to go and participate, and maybe be, for them a place to volunteer, because kids need to start learning how to volunteer and do other stuff. So, please, hopefully you guys push for this as soon as possible, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Ellen Ballard. Okay, Curtis, you're the next one, please.
Sir, evening again.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless and the veterans. Today, I want to share with you about the Hunt Library. I, I think that this project is gonna require funding, that's gonna be the most important thing. I, I go back to where I used to, I used to go to Hunt Library and use the little bitty computers that they had there, the, you know, the, the computers, so I, I'm kind of familiar with it. But anyway, what I would like to see is, you know, like when I come here and I speak all the time, I actually would like to see Mary's Kitchen be a part of this. And the reason I said it is because she had to move from the city of Orange. In, in less than thirty days, she won't be able to be there anymore, and she gives to the public. And so, when we talk about Hunt Library, we talking about a very, very poor community. The services that Mary's Kitchen offered will fit right in. We may have to make some adjustments, but these young people, they need the, in the community, this is again, a low-income community, they need lots of support, not just pat on the back, not just, you know, hit on the head and say, be a good kid. They need the love and caring that if they need something, they can come get it, no matter what it is, from A to Z, whether it be money, or, or housing, or whatever. This is what's needed in that particular community. Mary's Kitchen come with Gloria Seuss, she's here tonight, she's here tonight, I asked her to come. But she comes with all the services that, that we would need for the whole community, and she never says no to, to no one. Gloria Seuss has been with Orange for, for thirty years, serving this community. She brings, she brings her own funding. As a matter of fact, she has up to three million dollars, I'll put a number on it, she has three million dollars to bring into this. Besides what we have, five million dollars from Sharon Cork, ten million dollars, up to ten million dollars that we got from the Hope Center with all the funding that we've been, that's been funding through here, this should go to Mary's Kitchen to do what we need to get done to the community. You know, Hope Center don't have time to do what she can do, what she can do. So, this is something that we want to get this thing done, we just don't want to put a building there, and it looks pretty, and it don't really serve those kids. Those kids are the most important thing. They come out and they help Ms. Seuss with her, with her projects. They help, they learn, they learn how to do things in the community, from serving the people. You know, the bad people that we are scared of and all this stuff like that, they come and serve them. In Fullerton, all the nonprofit churches and organizations, they always have those little bitty young people helping out, and where the adults are scared, are afraid, they're not. So, let's do something good.
Okay. Molly McClanahan.
I have a copy of my statement for the city clerk, if somebody would just take it over, city manager and the council member.
Oh, thank you.
I'm Molly McClanahan. So, I would like to address the mayor and the members of the council. While I served on the Hunt Library Ad-Hoc Committee, my comments tonight are solely as an individual. I have read the request for proposals, tenant operator. My first comment relates to the listed priority policy statements, fiscal and organizational stability, infrastructure and city assets. And while I support those backbone policies, a third should be added to build community. The vision statement from the Ad-Hoc Committee underlines this. The restoration and revitalization of this architectural treasure provides Fullerton with the unique opportunity to rebuild and strengthen a sense of community and belonging in our diverse and remarkable city. We envision a variety of comparable and creative uses that bring residents together in a place that is welcoming, a place of learning and sharing knowledge, a place that encourages curiosity, a place that serves as a hub of activities, programs, events, and classes. We envision the possibility of a renaissance of literacy in its broadest sense for Fullerton, our education community. The first priority of this council is to, and I appreciate this background that you gave on the security measures, but the first priority of this council that can be moved up is to install a security fence, because this is a treasured city asset, and the state of California has provided funds for its upgrade and restoration. The city needs to be a partner to help protect that public investment. The RFP includes charging rent with a market-rate lease with CPI built in. This indicates that the city is really not looking for a nonprofit, but a commercial tenant. A commercial interest will not have the public interest as their first priority. Plus, what nonprofit has at least one million dollars cash on hand for tenant improvements? I recommend that you table this item and take the time to communicate with those who invested a great deal of time, energy, and devotion into the original recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, next speaker, please.
And Barbara, oh, sorry, Ellen Ballard, you're next.
Ms. Ballard.
And Barbara, as you can probably tell, you're, you're next on my list.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ellen Ballard, and glad to be here, Mr. Mayor and city council people, and I want to commend the city engineer before I say anything. I'm so impressed with all that you have done and all that you propose. I think it was terrific. So now, to the hard part. I'm just here as a private citizen, and I'm committed to restoring the Hunt Library as a viable, valuable community asset, open to all Fullerton residents. Many community members have been involved in the progress and path forward to make Hunt Library a vital community resource. Stakeholders were under the impression, and actually the direction from the city, to choose a group that would offer programming that would be of interest to the larger Fullerton community, as well as providing much-needed library services. Those services are not limited to books, but also to promote literacy. It appears that the rules and direction are maybe going to change. I understand the need to develop a sustaining, lasting partnership, but this new proposal is not what the community expected or even desired. I believe a little more time and effort needs to be made to make clear exactly what the city wants and what citizens can do for the library. I understand the need for security and maintenance issues, and security fencing does need to happen sooner than later. A fair and upfront resolve needs to happen between the city and the program developers. Please note, I said fair and upfront resolve. Starting over negates progress and promises made. It will be a major setback if we cannot move ahead. I hope the council will continue its support for the library and not make hasty decisions that are unreasonable and impossible to accomplish. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk.
And Ms. Kilponin.
Next speaker. Ms. Kilponin. Good evening.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I didn't expect to be here, actually. I have a number of other projects around town that I've been working on, but this is important, and there are four of us from the Ad-Hoc Committee that have worked long and hard over a number of months to come to the conclusion with unanimity that Mr. Stein and Future Heritage were, was ideologically the only group that we could support in the final analysis, and I'm pleased that Mr. Stein came this evening. This maintenance issue is one that's very interesting to me, because having been on the school board for twenty-eight years, you can imagine how much maintenance that we were doing, and we were always in deficit, and we were always trying to find ways to get things fixed. I wondered, over the months, why I never heard anything about maintenance costs or whatever, because the church had been using that building for some time, and certainly had some maintenance costs that they could have passed on to us in some kind of memo, I think, if, if requested. But we were in such transition here in Fullerton in terms of the city leadership, administrative, and even our, our council. They, there seemed to be a lot of gaps. We had a lot of employees seem to leave, and I never felt comfortable trying to figure out, well, finding out who I should talk to about the maintenance issue. It was always on my mind. And finally, I came to the conclusion, well, since it wasn't in the RFP, and no one ever talked about it, that it was evidently going to be covered by the city with the added income or revenue from the state, much appreciated by the efforts of our Assembly and State Senator. So, this was a surprise to me to learn that we were in this dilemma. My concern is that after all the hours, and really quality time that we spent figuring out what to do, and having so much enthusiasm from the crowds that came to the visionary sessions, and also that who came to our meetings as the Ad-Hoc Committee, that the project could be, or the programming could be in jeopardy. I hope that instead, we pick up the dialogue and continue discussing what this programming would mean to the city, because in my eyes, and as we talked about it, it was gonna enhance Fullerton's future.
Thank you.
And I'd like to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment this evening. Madam City Clerk.
Kurt Johnston is our next speaker, and then Alma, Carla, and Vince Buck.
I think for a building, a historic building of this type, I think it's important to look at the history of this building. This building was designed by a philanthropist as part of the organization, Large Factory, called Hunts, and it, it was, it's a special building, lots of windows, it's, it's a beautiful place. The library was in there for a while, but I don't feel like the library is necessary the foundation that we should be building this idea off, because things have changed a lot, and library services are not what they used to be. A lot of people can get their reading material on Kindle or whatever. I, I would envision this to, to be more of a contribution to the community if it had music and, and culinary. So, we have the Springfield Banquet Center, which was not designed as a banquet center, it's kind of like a church, Williams Company, they have banquets up there. I've been in, in both. The lighting, there's not much lighting at all. I feel like the Hunt Branch Facility be a nice place to have banquets, and there's lots of special events. It's a large open space, and I, I would like to see security not to be a driving force in this. There's a few broken windows in the back, but that's understandable considering the building's been left abandoned, and the windows look like they all need to be replaced anyway. This building should be open, and also, I, I support the idea of Mary's Kitchen being a partner. Their cooking is what they do best, and I feel like a good cooking facilities would be a nice contribution to this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, next speaker, please.
Alma Villachies.
Yo estoy aquí para abogar, para que siga con lo de artes, y pues fue una triste saber cómo vandalizaron. Nosotras siempre estamos de voluntarias para ayudar con lo que podemos para nuestra comunidad.
Disculpe, tienen... Okay, all right. I was gonna offer if you didn't have it. All right.
Y por favor, me gustaría que siguiéramos con el proyecto que ya estaba de artes. Gracias.
Thank you. And the translation, please.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm here to advocate for the arts, and it's very sad to see the vandalism going on. I am a volunteer along with others. We volunteer for the community, and I would like to express that we continue working on the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, next speaker, please.
And Carla Aguayo, I'm sorry if I said that wrong. I'll just say Carla.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Carla Aguayo, y estoy aquí como, soy voluntaria del centro de Fullerton, y la verdad, yo he vivido aquí más de veinte años en Fullerton, pero hasta ahora que fuimos a ayudar como voluntarias a limpiar la librería, me di cuenta que es un lugar muy bonito, que para mi punto de vista, ahora que se está ofreciendo, dicen que está el... que para mi punto de vista, ahora que se está ofreciendo, dicen que está el proyecto del artes, sería un placer que todos los, ya sea niños o grandes, podamos disfrutar de las, de los servicios que van a ofrecer en ese, en ese lugar. Y si cuentan con el presupuesto ya dado, me parecería buena idea que sea lo más pronto posible para que chicos y grandes podamos disfrutar de todo lo que puede ser en nuestra ciudad de Fullerton, algo que también podría ser un ejemplo de, para otras ciudades, que nosotros seamos una comunidad que brinde cosas buenas para todas las personas.
Thank you. And can we have the translation, please?
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Carla Aguayo, and I'm here as a volunteer. I volunteer at the Fullerton Center. I've been living here, I've been a resident for 20 years, and until recently, I became a volunteer clean, with the library, cleaning the library, and I just found out it's really pretty. And there's an art project and that I would like kids and adults to take advantage of the services. Also, the, the current project, I'm sorry, the current...
Prosupuesto.
I had a blank.
Budget.
Budget. Sorry, I get a blank sometimes. The current budget, I would like to expedite that a little quicker so that the residents, the families, and the kids are able to enjoy the services in Fullerton. And we would like for the library to be a representation as a great library to other cities as well, because there's a lot to offer for the families. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, next speaker, please.
And Vince Buck is our last speaker in the chambers.
Mr. Buck, good evening, sir.
Thank you. I just want to say I agree with much of what has been said before, especially with Molly McClanahan, and especially with her emphasis upon community, which should be a goal here. This is a building, a facility, that could be used to greatly enhance the building community in Fullerton. I think the council, over the years, has lost sight of its role in enhancing community. They've just cut back on many events and facilities that have done this. We've lost, I mean, going way back, we had something called Founder's Day where you had a parade and you had, you know, events going on all weekend. You could throw balls and dunk the city manager, which my son greatly appreciated. July 4th has disappeared, the events, New Year's, there's discussion of outsourcing the library, cutting back even further on hours, I suppose. The street fair is only funded through August 25th, when the best months in my memory have been the September and October. I mean, the list goes on. There's many things that the city has done in the past to help the community, and this is just another example of something that could be done, and it's just sort of, you know, dying on the vine, as it were. I've been involved with this issue for many years, it seems like 10 years at least. I lose track of time here. But way back before the Ad-Hoc Committee, I was appalled when the current, at the time, the renter was, seemed to be expanding its footnote, and one of the council members was suggesting unloading the building. I don't know what's going on now. I don't understand it. I've read, I read the agenda, I read the RFP. I don't know what happened to the old RFP process. It's confusing to me. The city has not been the most transparent on this as it is often the want, and I'm afraid this is another attempt to get rid of the facility. And I, this is a special facility. It's a facility that could be used to create special events and create special memories with people. So, I hope you take that seriously. I hope you take the community building aspect of it seriously and get something in there that is valuable to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, any Zoom comments?
We have two hands in Zoom.
Very well.
And Matthew Leslie, you should be able to unmute.
I believe I'm unmuted now. Is that the case?
You are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Jung, and members of the council for considering the fate of the Hunt Library tonight as you have in the past. I'd like to thank Richard Stein of Arts OC for his presentation. I'm very glad the people of Fullerton have finally had the opportunity to hear the organization's report. I know from experience that Mr. Stein and Arts OC have been and continue to be a very effective arts advocacy and management organization for our county. As you know, Save the Hunt, on behalf of whom I'm speaking tonight, was formed several years ago to ensure that the historic Hunt Library remain in the public realm for community use, rather than allowing this historic asset to be sold off as excess property to a private owner, as Mr. Buck just suggested it was. We were thrilled when the council ultimately listened to our concerns and established an Ad-Hoc Committee to consider the best uses for the Hunt, and eventually selected partners to provide community programming at the facility. We are now disappointed that these negotiations between the city's chosen partner organizations seem to have broken down. We are optimistic that other organizations or some combinations of existing ones can ultimately be found to provide appropriate programming there in line with the library Ad-Hoc Committee's recommendations. We are gravely concerned about the recent vandalism to the Hunt. The pictures of the broken windows are just horrific. We strongly encourage the city to find a way to provide adequate security immediately and not wait for the planned renovations or installation of any kind of permanent fence to begin. We ask that cameras be installed immediately in order to monitor the area being vandalized. This could be one person. So, we, we, we have camera technology for that sort of thing. This is a public facility, and I think it needs to be secured by public means. So, please see that that happens in some way. We don't want to hold up the process for finding an appropriate partner or partner organizations any longer than necessary, but before the city issues any kind of RFP, formal or informal, Save the Hunt would like to have city staff meet with community stakeholders, including members of the library Ad-Hoc Committee, as was just advocated by committee member Molly McClanahan, and possible other partnering arts organizations who can provide programming consistent with the uses recommended by the aforementioned Ad-Hoc Committee. Requiring, I have to say, I mean, there are onerous demands in the prior RFP and requiring that a partner organization provide funding for, I mean, major improvements and for ongoing maintenance for a city-owned facility, it's just not a realistic way to attract a bona fide, community-oriented partner. If the city, if it's going to remain a city facility as we all want it to be, the city has to take on some of this. We're fortunate that we have money that's coming from the state to be able to do this. We need to spend it wisely, and we need to commit to have this as a public facility long-term. You're not going to get somebody who's going to walk in with huge amount of money and be able to do the sort of work that the current RFP seems to want to happen. So, we respectfully ask that you allow a stakeholder meeting to happen before making any decisions about this site. Thank you very much for your time.
Understood. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, next speaker, please.
And Jane Reifer, if I can find my mouse, you will be allowed to talk. There you go.
Great, thank you. Good evening again, mayor and council members. Jane Reifer, also representing Save the Hunt, and I can't really say it much better than Matt Leslie just did. I would like to just add just a couple of things regarding the security. That is just essential, that we elevate, escalate, expedite a security, a new security program. There may be funding necessary for that, maybe a small amount of funding. There may be able to be volunteers who can fill in. I know on construction sites, it's very, it's traditional to have a caretaking couple in a trailer. I know that sounds a little odd, but that is one way to have essentially free security. I did notice that the date today is July 19th, and the date on the presentation for when the fence would start to be installed is September 19th. And so, you can see there's a two-month gap, and we've already had breaches. So, please, let's escalate that, expedite that. And then regarding the, the other major issue here tonight, which is the finding programming partners, can, can there be a little more explanation of what informal means and how that would work? And I do agree that we need to have stakeholders meeting sooner rather than later to see if we can correspond the two RFPs, to make sure that they're conveying the same ideas and asking for the same type of, the same type of responses. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, with no further speakers, we will bring this back to council. I'm sure that council members may have some questions. We can provide direct to staff accordingly. I will go left to right. Councilmember Silva, what do you have, sir?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Couple of questions, I guess, for our engineer. We're doing the fence now. Are we putting solar on top? And can we? Should we? Solar panels, that is.
Solar panels on the fence?
No, 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 on the roof. Did I say fence?
Well, no, no, we're not proposing any solar panels on the roof.
Why is that?
The roof is, it's a flat roof. It's foam. It's very, it's a very special material. Penetrating in any way compromises the material on the roof itself and the building, for that matter.
All right, thank you. That's one. And then, there was the question about expediting the fence. Is there any way possible to do that?
There are certain requirements for procurement with state funds, so we have to follow those. So, it is a lengthy process. We are planning to bring it back to council for award of that contract in mid-August, beginning of August 16th meeting. And we were trying to rush that process because the next meeting is September 20th, so we didn't want to lose that month. So, we kind of rushed out the plans to bid in order to meet that date. So, it's just the, you know, having the bidders an opportunity to review the plans, ask questions, the time that's allotted, that's required by the state due to the funding requirements, and then just signing the contracts and getting up to speed. It just takes time.
All right, well, thank you. And then, this next one, securities. We talked about that. I know we have a security guard out here during the day. Is there any way to shift those resources and put security at the Hunts, at least during the evening when we have most of the damage occurring? I don't know, would that be for the city manager, the public works chief, or the engineer? I'd like to take a look at that, because, if possible.
Councilmember Silva and city council members, we have been talking about that internally. I don't think I have the price, or maybe I do, in, for it, but one, one idea that we are, or that I've been talking about, is possibly doing it at least in this interim period for 10 hours a night, doing it more at night instead of the day. So, we have been talking about it, and maybe starting where I could do it within my authority, and then if it's successful, we could bring it back to council for a longer-term contract. There is cost. If we did 24 hours, we were talking somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000. That would be on an annual cost, right?
Yeah. No, I mean, maybe we don't need it 24/7, but at least some of the evenings where it's darker and so forth. And then, just this next question, I think, is for either Mr. Stein. When that outreach was going on and we, and the community waved in, chimed in with the, with the suggestions, was there any talk of doing, I guess, daycare, childcare there? Did that ever come up?
Daycare and childcare did not come up specifically. Primarily, the focus was on after-school activities for kids.
And the reason I ask that is that I know the first five has funding available, that I know we're trying to figure out how to fund this building, and so that was just a thought. Okay, thank you. And then, the questions, let's see, what other... Oh, yes, you might have to come back here, or maybe not. We'll see. But in this design, is there plans to have, I think, somebody said a banquet space or places where people can rent the facilities for after-hour parties? Because I understand that the community center is booked two years out for weddings and what have you not. So, could this be a place where we can extend those facilities and, and have those type of functions to help subsidize the building? Was that part of the discussion?
Yes, councilman. There clearly is strong demand for a special events venue in the community, and that was factored into the business model, for sure.
All right. All right, that's all the questions I have, but I'll make some comments after.
Very good. Councilmember Dunlap, anything, sir, question-wise?
So, is this questions or comments, or both?
Both.
Yeah? Okay. I mean, look, I appreciate the public coming out tonight. I think that a lot of the thoughts that are shared, or that were shared, are consistent with kind of my feelings all along. Yeah, there was, there was one comment that was made about a CPI clause that was included in the lease. I think it's important to note that, you know, I think that's, that's a pretty standard, you know, term or item that's included in a commercial lease. I think it's important to include whether it's a for-profit or nonprofit entity, simply because, you know, the cost to the city or whichever operator are going to, going to go up, and as a result of that, over time, they're going to have to have the appropriate mechanism in place to, you know, to be reimbursed or made whole by the tenant or by the user. So, things like utilities, insurance and such, they're going to go up over time. You know, to have a minimal escalator in, you know, clause inserted in the lease is not, I don't think, extraordinary or uncommon. But having said that, you know, the, really, the one thing that concerns me, I'm a big proponent of our public library here, and, you know, would note that we've in fact, you know, had spent somewhat under the budget there, or under budgeted there with respect to, you know, our potential, our expenses. And in fact, you know, I guess I want to be mindful of the fact that that's, you know, we're not fully funding our own library here, and so we need to be careful to take on additional expenses, I think, with respect to, you know, getting something like this up and running. Obviously, there's going to be one-time startup expenses, things like that. I think it's important to be mindful of a situation where we're getting into kind of a permanent arrangement with increased expenses that ultimately the city can't afford to pay. So, perhaps over time, you know, the operator will be able to get, you know, succeed with grant funding and such to continue to make sure that that's, you know, somewhat self-sustaining, because I know, obviously, the Fullerton Museum Center is another, you know, local treasure that is, you know, underfunded, you know, by the city, simply because of the budgetary issues. And so, I think lastly, the, you know, the thing that I'll say, I mean, we're, we're here tonight listening to a lot of these issues with respect to kind of the physical conditions, you know, the perimeter that was, you know, not gated or where the gates had been broken, but there were also, I think, upwards of two dozen windows that have been broken that are going to cause or carry quite the expense for the city. And, and so, you know, I look at this, and I understand there's obviously time constraints with respect to the state contracts that we're going to have to, or the state funding that we're going to have to follow, but anything that we can do, you know, even locally, to, to foot the expense in the short term so that we can get those items fixed and restored and get this on the right track, I'm, I'm willing to support. So, those are, those are my comments.
Very good, sir. Councilmembers, all right.
Yeah, I don't really have any, any questions, but... So, there's a few, a few things I'd like to say here. I'm, I'm reminded by Winston Churchill during World War II when they were trying to cut budgets, and they were cutting the budget for arts in order to win the war, and he said, "Well, why are we fighting then? What are we fighting for?" I think arts and education are crucial, and, and they're underfunded because we, as a council, have underfunded them. That is the truth. We control the budget, and we have the ability to move funds around. We received very substantial funding from, from the federal government and ARPA funds, and we, we decided to allocate them in certain ways. So, now, as, as for the, the RFPs, we need to have more clarity for both the public and for the applicants in our RFPs moving forward. This is not the first time this has happened. We just experienced that with the Maple Center, where there was input from the public, from myself, about the rental facility and continuing, you know, keeping access to the community for that, and yet that continued to be ignored all the way until almost promises were made to a nonprofit, and I feel bad for how they were treated. We are in now a similar situation where we made a commitment to a nonprofit organization or, or a couple of them who have come in in good faith, and now suddenly, you know, a year, two years out, we're saying, "Wait a minute, we've changed our minds." So, again, a lack of clarity. I've asked that we reach out to the community members, the committee that have, that took the time to vet all of this and spend the time to save the Hunt Library, and I really appreciate all the work that everybody has done for that. And yet, no communication has been made to any of them. And... communication has been made to any of them. And we talk about, you know, creating partnerships, but it seems what we're doing here is just looking for a tenant to unload a building, yes, another one, right? That's the truth. And it really stems from also our staffing levels, because we have overloaded our staff with so much work, and they are, and now, Parks and Rec, if anybody noticed, we don't even have in the budget a director for that department. We've understaffed our city, and then, this is the result. So, we can't lose a building like this, that is such an asset, an historic building, and treat it as if it was just something we want to rent out to cover our costs. This is not what this was intended to be. So, with all the work and the money that has been poured in from the state, and we're very grateful to our representatives, who have really put in the time to lobby the state for these funds, and to all the, our staff and our city engineer, who are taking, you know, really careful and methodical ways to protect this building and bring it back to its glory. I think what we need to be doing is looking for partners, expanding the partnerships, rather than pulling the plug on one and trying to look for another one, whether formal or informal. So, I'm not going to be supportive of this move at this point without further communication with our stakeholders. If we are going to look for additional partners, then I think we should be looking, working with the current partners that we have. I thought that Mr. Stein and OC Arts, and when they did the event, I thought they did a fantastic job in rallying the community over, you know, and bringing people together. That is what we want. And I think we should be working with them to help them bring more partnerships into the equation, rather than just pushing them out. So, I'm not supportive of any of this without this further communication and working with our partners. So, that is what I have to say. And as far as the safety, I think it's been mentioned, and I appreciate as fast as possible that we move forward with protecting the building and the work that we're all doing for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, for your time. Comments, or questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I had requested this item to be agendized, in large part to update on the progress or lack of progress of this effort, and because I was very disturbed at an accelerating and increasing destruction of this historic facility. I was hopeful tonight that I would receive a good update and estimate on the amount of damage that has occurred over the last 18 months or so. But, especially during the pandemic, this facility was out of sight, out of mind, and this destruction, the vandalism, has been pretty intense. The back portion of the building, the north-facing, I counted some 26 window panels, many of them very large. In fact, at first glance, it looks like upwards of 85, 90% of all the window panels on the north side have been destroyed. One of the things about any architecturally significant building or any historic building that's very important is when you're rehabilitating or restoring such building, that you maintain as much original concept as was there, as much original material as can be salvaged and restored. And we have been failing miserably at protecting this asset. It's a separate topic, in my opinion, for us to proceed with the programming at that facility and with the partners that we obviously need, and with some self-sustaining capability there. But, in the meantime, when you're bleeding, when you have arterial bleeding, you need to put a tourniquet on it. So, the security is very important at this point. We're very fortunate, there hasn't been a fire there at this stage. So, this is what happens when a facility becomes orphaned, and when no one really is taking accountability for it. So, I was hopeful that by bringing this to the attention, yes, we do have a lot of work to do. What I'd like to recommend is that we have a standing quarterly update report on this facility in terms of both the structure itself and then what the programming plans are for it. And the suggestion that I would have is, in the past, this was almost relinquished to a neighboring party because we couldn't afford it as just a library, as fairly limited hours and limited programming going on there. So, it seems to me that if this can be made refurbished and made a very desirable location, particularly for events, that expanding those hours of programming would also serve a security function for the building as well. And in fact, the less that that public facility is available to the public, the more a target it will be for this type of destruction and vandalism. So, I don't think that it's mutually exclusive at all to want to restore and maintain and keep that property in a more pristine level, and allowing the public to have more access and more utilization out of that property. I see those two really being hand-in-hand. And that may well require more than one partnership with nonprofits, or at least a pretty open notion in terms of dealing with private demands on the property. There is a huge amount of demand for banquet facilities for areas where you can have gatherings, reasonable number of people. And that, properly restored, is, it's a very nice place for someone to have such gatherings, such meetings, or concerts, or whatever else might occur. So, I think we need to think in multi-facets and not just as it being one thing. I know a lot of the grant monies that we've been able to secure, and I very much appreciate that, they're very library-connected. So, it appears, in meeting the requirements of those grants, that we still sustain some library capability there. But, I know that we do need a wider range of program activities for that structure. But, I would like to at least request to the council some agreement on the notion of getting at least a 90-day update report regularly here at the council on this.
Thank you, sir. There is a level of structural integrity that we have to have on this particular property. I'm glad that the members of our council are in agreement with our staff and our public that this Tiffany part of our city should remain that way and not neglected. There has been such a public investment made on this historic property. I cannot accept the public and our ad hoc committee not being an integral part of this process moving forward. That said, it is not uncommon that there are structural demands of a city our age. I agree with Councilmember Zara that we have prioritized funding X at the risk of proportionally not advancing Y. But, I also encourage us all to look at all of the deficits we face, year after year, after decades of perpetual neglect in this city. It is the job of our council to prioritize, to be a tourniquet, to find solutions. If a better idea exists, then we should embrace it by being open to moving it forward. If there exists a more talented proposal, it should be presented, so we can move forward with certainty. I defy any of us here to remark that art, or education, or libraries are not a priority. They are. But, at the risk of what else? There are so many priorities in this city, it's important to be measured, to be fair, and allocate the funding accordingly across the board. So, I encourage our staff, and the direction that I would support, is to advance the security of this property with, without haste, or with haste, without delay, and that we move forward on finding a partner for, to open this treasured building to the public once more, in a deliberate manner, inviting all of our public and ad hoc committee to have input and move us forward accordingly. That would be my motion, sir. Any other comments I wish to, you know, that I wish to make, please do so. Otherwise, I'd entertain a different motion or a second to mine.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, no, well, I agree with what has been said about us, the city council, having shifted focus, or having a different focus than primarily this building, which I understand there are so many priorities that we've had to decide what we focus on. And I do agree that we've so understaffed our department, our Parks and Rec, our public works, that we're not able to get out there and maintain and manage these facilities. And so, yeah, I think if the council hopefully is willing to shift the focus, and I would agree that we need to figure out how to secure that building so that doesn't, the damage, the vandalism doesn't increase. And so, I would definitely like to see that, that we've given, maybe give the city manager some authority to, in essence, lock down that place, and there are no more damages occur. And if it means extra funding for security or expedite the fencing, I don't know what, but we do need to save the building right now. And I would like to say that I do appreciate us wanting to go back out there and hold another, hopefully, another round of meetings and so forth, because I cringe at that sometimes, not because I don't want to be transparent, because the more meetings we have, I keep looking back at the Fox. I've been here since 91, and that place is still trying to get open. Coyote Hills, Mr. Dunlap, you were born here, that, we've been trying to open or build on that for however many years, all you are, a lot. And then, you know, we've gotten some money for certain projects in Fullerton that I, that have yet to develop. There was funding for the Boys and Girls Club. That doesn't seem to be going nowhere. There was $2 million for the Fox. We're still in limbo. There's been money for the, what is it, for the, for the Hunt, and that's taking place, so I appreciate that. But, there's been other funding that we seem, we, and I say we, Fullerton, maybe the council, I don't know, we sit on it. And we haven't gone out there and created the project. So, though I would like to have a lot of community input, I don't want to have, be where we're talking about it next year in the spring. We've got to get this project going. We have to adhere to what the community wants, which was in this presentation. We've got to make it a community-public area. We've got to offer the programs for everyone. And that's one of the reasons I was asking about, you know, the childcare and childcare, because I know, first five, there is funding available for that. But, if that's not what we want, then that's fine. But, anyway, with that, I would agree, we need to get this building moving. We need to save it, and we need to open it up sooner than later.
And Councilman, I do agree, we, as a council, can provide staff and the city that kind of urgency, just from here, by our will here. So, that said, Councilmember Dunlap, I'm sure you have another comment you'd like to make, sir?
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, I mean, look, there's been a robust community involvement. I mean, there's been a separate ad hoc committee that got us to the point, you know, or got us as a city to where we were, and bringing on Arts OC, and then, of course, all of their outreach, the reports done. So, the work has been done. You know, I think the last thing that needs to be done is getting back into a situation where there's more analysis paralysis, and we're continuing to review and kick things around. It's time to get things done. And I think, you know, I would support the 90-day update, but really, it's time to get this going. And I think we need to not make excuses, and we need to just get things done. So, whether that's the city manager doing it, and then bringing back updates, you know, a combination of both, we should do that.
So, sir, is your suggestion then, to move forward with the RFP, informal or otherwise, to adhere with the community investment and the community feedback that we already have, and to move forward with that?
Right, in conjunction with some of the maintenance items that were noted or discussed.
Very good. Okay. So, if that's your motion, I'll look for a second or other comments.
I'll second that, because I think, from what I understand, this informal process is to go out there and maybe find a few partners and talk, and then come back, yeah.
All right, very well. Unless there's a substitute motion, Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Zara?
No.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passes four to one.
Very good. Our last item this evening is delegate and alternates for Cal City's annual conference. I believe the conference is set first, or first week of September, right? Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough to make some sort of small presentation on the matter?
I will make a very quick preamble for you. The Cal Cities, formerly the League of California Cities, has an annual conference every year. That's why it's called annual. This year, it's September 7th through 9th in Long Beach. And at the end of the conference on Friday, they have the general assembly, and they ask that city council appoint a delegate and up to two alternates to represent the city at that annual general assembly.
Very good. So, I will seek from the council nominations for the delegate?
Well, if no one's interested, I'll throw my name in there, either for the delegate or an alternate, either one.
Very good. Is there any other interest? Oh, looks like by attrition, sir, you're it. And I'll just ask anybody that wants to be an alternate, I suppose I'll chuck it in and say myself. And what about Mayor Protem, sir?
No, I'm good.
No? Councilmember Zara, alternate? Looks like you only have one.
They must all have Friday plans. Okay. I will, if you could quickly vote on this, so I can send the information off to the League, sorry, to Cal Cities. I will get used to that. If you're ready, I'll take the vote.
Very good. Madam City Clerk, you have your delegate, you have your alternate. Go ahead.
Do we get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Very well. All right, Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
That concludes our meeting this evening. Enjoy the All-Star game. The next meeting is Tuesday, August 2nd. Same bat time, same bat channel, folks. Have a good night.